The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, we're going to call the council to order. As the role reflected, all council members are in attendance with the exception of Councilmember Brock, said Bolsonic. A quorum has been established. Council, we have before us tonight the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 23rd, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items be considered. Any further council items be considered? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we go to community development. And we have a resolution before us on the original Hastings Design Standards Review, 614 Fifth Street West. John, welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. We have OHHDS review tonight for a property shown on the map here on West Fifth Street. Again, what OHHDS review is, it's the original Hastings Design Standards Regulations. These are a set of regulations that are in place for areas in the older part of Hastings. They're not historic regulations per se, but more to ensure that new construction, renovations to existing buildings match into the neighborhood. And so, we have a review based upon that. So, the house that we have in question is located right here. And what they're planning to do is to add a garage to the back of it at 614 West Fifth Street. This is what the garage addition would look like. It would be outlined in blue here with the connection on the second floor. The square footage would be about 700 square feet per story on the first floor, which would be garage, and the second floor, which would be living space. This is a picture of what the building looks like here, along with a rendition of what it would look like with the addition. The garage will be stepped back, the pitch would be similar to the roof, and the attached area would just be on the story with clear space underneath, better shown in this picture here. So, the planning commission did review this at the July 30th meeting. With limited discussion, they did recommend approval of this, subject to the conditions of the resolution. Taking a look at the OHHDS standards, we thought that the building addition was pretty similar to what we see in the neighborhood. The garage is set back, you really can't see the addition portion of it, and so, we thought it was keeping well with the standards. So, I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Council, let's go to this item. This is before us. Discussion? Or a motion? Councilmember Liefeld makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the preliminary and final plan for Wallon 18th addition, and a public hearing that goes with that, vacation of easement, Wallon 17th. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. What we have before us is action requesting a preliminary and final plat for Wallon 18th addition. This is located at General Seaborn Drive and Riverfront Drive here. The proposal is to subdivide this portion of it into 22 Villa Home sites. Now, this proposal was heard by the planning commission last week. They recommended denial of it after significant discussion and testimony during the public hearing. After that meeting, the applicant, Wallon Development, asked for this item to be tabled from tonight's discussion. So, we're asking for you to do that. They want to be able to review potential changes to the subdivision. One of those potential changes was submitted to you in the packet tonight. They understand the concerns of the driveway access along General Seaborn Drive and want to be able to address as many of those concerns as possible. So, what we're asking for officially tonight is for you to table action on this item, the preliminary and final plat at the city council, and to direct any future modifications to this plat back to the planning commission. So, at this point, I am uncertain as to whether the planning commission would review this at their next meeting coming up on Monday, the 13th, or whether it would be a subsequent meeting. Regardless of that, we would provide another notification out to the neighbors when this does come back. And so, that is the item that we have related to the preliminary and final plat. I'll go into a little detail on the second item as well, since it's related, and that is a vacation of easement on the plat. On the original subdivision that occurred here, there was an easement that was dedicated, 20-foot drainage and utility easement, that would be in the middle of a lot upon the reconfiguration. And so, if they move forward with the Villa Home concept, this easement would no longer be necessary. So, what we're asking for tonight is for you to order the public hearing. We would hold the public hearing for that coming up in two weeks on the 20th, but we would not take any action on that until the final plat was to come forward on it. So, that's what we have before us tonight. I don't believe there's any representation from the developers, so I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, council, we have before us the preliminary and final plan that's been asked to table. I will accept that motion. That would be a non-debatable motion. The table. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Lund. That motion is before the body. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. We'll go to order a public hearing, which is, John would like to see continue. For the 20th, August 20th. I'll take a motion to accept that. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, you said we're going to re-notify the neighbors on this item, is that what it is?
Correct.
And that's 350 feet, is what it traditionally is?
It is.
Have we ever expanded that to make it bigger than?
Larger than that?
Larger, I'm sorry.
Uh, we typically just go 350. I mean, it doesn't preclude us to go further. It's just a matter of trying to determine if we go 350 on one item, is there expectations that we go further distance on others?
Only reason I bring it up, Your Honor, is the lot sizes and the land mass. I just thought, I heard and I watched the planning commission, there's people that are buying houses and building houses that were surprised by the Villa concept, and I just thought, maybe we should be reaching out a little bit farther, so they all know about it, get that chance. Just my opinion. Okay? Is there further discussion? Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I was going to say the same thing. I think just because of the density is different in that area than what we might see elsewhere, probably is a good idea to consider expanding that message out a little bit further. But, just also for clarification, we will not see this until it goes through commission again, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Would I say this? I mean, the previous item.
Say that again?
Previous item that we just voted on.
Right, exactly. So, the intent would be, it's tabled here at city council, any changes on the plat would be reviewed by the planning commission and then returned to city council.
And that would have the same notification as this, then?
Correct.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Thanks, John. Echo both of you on that. I'm not sure how that gets decided, how far out you can go. I would take this opportunity then to tell the few people who have shown up to discuss this at previous meetings to start something to notify your neighbors. This is one of those things, I believe, your neighbors are going to be interested in. This is a new development, these houses, you know, we're not talking 20, 30, 40-year-old houses. We're talking a new established neighborhood, and I think this would be an opportunity for residents to take some initiative, to make sure they're notifying their neighbors of this, so that everyone has, everyone can be heard on this. Thanks, John, I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the motion still before us, order a public hearing on the vacation of easement. Is there additional discussion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Just one clarifying thing, because what I heard from those residents is, we've got to put a little ownership on that developer, because from what I was hearing, they would not, first, they heard of the Villa concept from buying a house from that developer. So, I encourage that developer to be expanding that message. It's not always on the city to make sure we're farther than 350 feet. So, I encourage the developer to get the message to make sure they're reaching out to the people in the Wallon area.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, do you have any recommendations as to how far it should be, you know, expanded to? Because that's Ward 4, Precinct 1, right? And so, it wouldn't be, well, I mean, it's not all of that precinct, but a good chunk of that up there is that particular development. And so, and that's a lot of houses. So, I'm not so great with the names of the immediate streets around there, but Trevor, or Councilmember Lund, would you have recommendations for, you know, the streets that you think that should actually be notified?
Councilmember?
Your Honor, thank you. I would defer to John. I think the map would probably be pretty clear when you look at the property sizes to kind of give a gauge of how many homes a typical 350 holds on Ramsey Street versus out there, and just expand house units versus feet. And then, to your point of slippery slope concerns, I think that may minimize that then, John.
Okay. Is there a clear enough direction?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay. We still have the main motion, council. Is there any further discussion to the main motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next, we have a resolution for the site plan of the parking ramp at the former First National Bank, 119 Second Street West. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Site plan approval for the 123-stall parking ramp on the former First National Bank property. As you all know, with the Great Rivers Landing development, this is a key portion of that, provides parking not only for this development, but also general parking for the downtown area. You may recall that the Confluence Development Group purchased this property in 2015 with the intent to doing that, so they have put their own funds into purchasing the property. Received a $1.5 million grant from Metropolitan Council to build the parking ramp itself. This would be a reimbursable grant that we would get invoices from the developer, and then, we would reimburse for various items of construction while that goes on. The ramp itself does require site plan approval, and it is going to be divided in a couple of different ways. On the first floor, call it along Second Street, there's going to be parking spaces here. That total, I'm trying to find, 35. So, 35 covered parking spaces here, right along Second Street, and then, on top of that, there would be another 88 spaces. So, you've got 123 altogether. This is a little bit larger than what we saw originally. I think we had 119. When we take a look at Great River Landing, and the parking needs that are generated by the Hudson development, we had calculated that we would need to have a parking, total parking between this site and the Hudson site of 226 parking stalls. The revised count now with this parking structure, and the revised parking at Great River Landing has increased to 237. So, there's been additional nine stalls that have been added since we gave the original site plan review. So, the access itself would be on the first floor, provided between Eddie Street and Vermillion Street, and then, the second floor here would be provided through the alley. Now, the height of the structure itself would be just about the same height as the First National Bank building that's there today. So, it's going to be rather low in stature as you see it. There would be a proposed crossing over here, over to the main Hudson site. This is what the building would look like. The building would be, would be mold that would be used to give an ashlar stone pattern within the development here. It's been intentionally made open on the front end of it, so that there's light that comes into the parking ramp. I've seen other parking ramp examples where you kind of have a narrowness down here, and it becomes much more dark. The spacing between the columns and the openness provides a much more airy appearance between here. The appearance of the exterior materials here are similar to that of the bridge itself. When you take a look at the 61 Bridge, the stonework that's done there, this would match the same color of the stonework. It would be, consists of a precast architectural concrete, integrally colored, the color would go all the way through with this pattern within it. What it looks like in real life is this. This is a building elsewhere that had have that same mold and have that same pattern within here. Now, the planning commission did review this at their last meeting on July 30th, did recommend approval of that on a unanimous vote. There was some discussion on the lighting, private use of the first level handicap parking, and some discussion on the appearance of the structure as well. And so, at this time, I can stand for any questions. We have several representatives here from Confluence Development, if you have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the introduction to this item. Council, this issue is before us. Any comment? Questions or comments? Councilmember Vaughn?
Just a quick follow-up, John, on the MinDOT side of it. Do we predict when we'll hear back on that part of it?
Yeah, on the MinDOT side, I got some initial comments back from them a few days ago. I don't think there's going to be much there at all, at least nothing site plan-related.
Okay, thank you.
Probably the biggest thing that we're waiting for is just confirmation from Dakota County on that crosswalk location. We had preliminary discussions with them during some of the plating of the Hudson building, and they were supportive at that time.
Hey, Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Could you help orient me on that, the rendering? I'm not sure where Second Street is.
Sure.
Seems like, seems like Second Street is a really big parking lot in front of the parking ramp. Is that?
Yes, Councilmember, this would be, whoops, this would be Second Street frontage here. This would be Eddie Street, residential area across the street over here. So, you have an entrance coming here. This would be the 61 Bridge.
Okay.
And the access road on this location.
Okay. The bridge being gone throws me off. So, but they're keeping the bridge, right?
I think so.
All right. We recommend that.
Or they're going to paint it sky-colored. I'm not sure which one it is.
Okay. Sounds good. So, there will be parking then, street parking in front of it as well? Okay.
There would be, and actually, there'd be a little bit of an increase in on-street parking here as well, I believe, because they'd be increasing the on-street parking, like two or three more stalls in front of where that surface parking lot is today.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, I had a question in regards to having an electric charging station. As you well remember, that I have brought it up a couple times, that it'd be wonderful to have a charging station in this particular ramp. And I thought I read in the planning commission notes that there was going to be one in there, but I didn't see it in this packet, so...
Mike or Greg wanted to address that?
Mr. Tocco, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, we've actually put in two, and they would be in the lower level, up against the back walls, since that'd be a good place to put the charging station, so.
Terrific, I'm so glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that, making that accommodation. I'm sure that it'll be good for tourism to make it a stop for folks to come downtown and charge their vehicle, or, you know, stay overnight and charge up as well. So, that's terrific.
Councilmember Liefeld?
So, John, clarification, then, the on-street parking isn't part of the 123 stalls?
That is correct. The on-street parking on Second Street would be in addition and above 123.
And then, also to clarify, this is a city public lot, and this will allow overnight parking, then?
It would be privately held, but under the public parking and use maintenance agreement, there would be public access to the lot itself. As far as restrictions for overnight parking, Dan, do you recall if there was anything in particular? I suppose with the hotel, you're going to have customers park overnight there.
Right, I don't believe there were restrictions. Melanie is chiming in, and she might recall a little better than I do.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. I would agree. I think the only one, that only city lot that has restrictions is under the bridge for overnight parking. So, I think this, I think the intent was to have it the same as our other service lots.
Thank you.
One last comment, because I'm excited. I know there were some comments about how it's not very aesthetically pleasing. I like it. It feels like it's just going to fit in. It's not the centerpiece of the downtown area. I really am excited to see, and it is, you're right, Councilmember Lund, without the bridge there, it's hard to really visualize it, but seeing your picture of the stone in front of that other building, I feel like it's going to match perfectly. And right now, we've got some overgrown trees and a blue and white building. So, I'm very excited to be able to park my car down there. And as everyone's noticed in town, it's getting harder and harder to find a parking spot downtown when you go out, and that is a wonderful problem to have. So, we're excited, I'm excited to get this started, so. Thanks, John, for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll chime in too, because I was going to say the same thing. I think aesthetically, for, you know, for our parking ramp, I like it. I really do like it a lot, and I think it's going to add on to the area, and the fact that it matches the bridge so well, and the bridge work, and the uniformity, and you break up the walls, it's just not concrete type of thing. It's broken up to look like stone type of a look. I think that's very much appropriate, and I really appreciate that design. I also spent last Saturday downtown, having dinner in a couple establishments, and I, this came up maybe three or four times from the business owners, and I said, "We're taking it up on this meeting tonight." There's a lot of excitement about the parking ramp and the additional parking for downtown. So, I just want to reiterate what an important project this is, and glad to see it here. Hopefully, get passed tonight and move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a follow-up question from the last time that we had a, was it our last council meeting? I think it was our last council meeting, where we were discussing the Hudson building and the timeframes for implementation there. And I had asked Mr. Regan if it was possible to bring forward when we were going to hear about the parking ramp, what their project timeframes were more holistically for the parking lot, and then, also for the Hudson, you know, development. And so, I didn't see that in the packet, and I didn't see mention as to when it was that, for instance, when is demolition to be anticipated, and then, construction begin, leveling the site, things like that. So, I would be curious to know more. I know Joe's not here, and he would really like to, I'm sure he'd be asking those questions himself.
Sure he would.
Right?
Okay. Mike, did you want to address that issue?
Mr. Manick, you're welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So, first off, we're glad to hear a positive response to the parking ramp. I think that, you know, we appreciate all of John's work on the project, and I think that it's coming together very nicely. I think Greg's doing a great job also. The idea, as you can see looking at it, is not to necessarily make a big architectural statement, but rather to blend in to some degree with the bridge that is already there, and to allow us to sort of make the statement across the street at the main property. So, I think that's what we're aiming to do, and I think that's what we'll be able to do here. With regard to a timeline, I think that what we've laid out would be a process that would allow us to do demolition work in September and October of this year, related to the First National Bank site, allow, if everything goes according to plan, for the precast panels to be installed in probably late October, that range, I think. And then, the parking structure would ideally be completed towards the end of this year, and would be open for the winter. I think that the main development project, the idea remains that we had an extension on the submittal deadline for when the construction documents would be submitted for that, but I think that the idea remains that those will come in this fall, and the construction will be about a 12-month process, which would allow us to meet the deadline in the development agreement and have all the work done before December 15th of 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foltz?
One other question, because it's been brought up in conversations, more maybe sidelined conversations in the past, as to the future plans for this particular structure, in that, that there are some hopes or desires to add on to the top of this structure, perhaps one day, you know, apartments or condos or something to that effect. And so, I'm just curious as to if this, if this is sold, first of all, that this agreement is a 30-year agreement, I believe, John, that gets passed through to whoever would actually, you know, have ownership, like in case, you know, it transfers. And then, and then, and then, if it's a 30-year agreement, that if condos are put on top of this, how will that work for parking? Because there's only a limited number of parking spots that are being attributed for private use, right? And so, just to speak to that a little bit about, you know, what does the future hold for this particular site? Thanks.
So, first, just to clarify your last comment, actually, under the latest version of the parking agreement, all 123 parking spaces are fully public with the limited exception of 30 days out of a year, but no more than five days within any month. There's an ability to sort of semi-privatize them for, you know, a special event or that sort of thing, and the hope is to use the revenue that we're able to generate through that process to keep the parking ramp maintained and looking as nice as it looks when we first built it. With regard to the second part of your question about the future, potential future construction of condominiums or apartments, the parking, the public parking easement agreement does not allow the developer to shut down those public parking spots in the future. They would remain public, so there would be a need to locate parking on an adjacent site, or build additional parking on that site, or do something else that prevented spots that are currently public from becoming private. So, I guess that's a long way of saying that the spots will remain public, and there would be a need for additional parking on top of the existing 123 spots if there was future development that needed additional parking above it.
And that's because, you know, remember, we have to remember, the 1.6 million is Metropolitan Council public dollars, so they're not going to lose those dollars. Okay, is there any further discussion? Do we have a motion? Okay, we need a motion to approve. Councilmember Lund makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. The motion is before the body. Is there any additional discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, next, we have comments from the audience. Are any comments this evening from the audience? Comments from the audience? Okay? Okay? Seeing none? Announcements, council? Do we have announcements? Okay, I have a few. Councilmember Foltz, did you have an announcement?
No, I didn't really, but since you asked me, I did have something on my mind, and it has, it is Councilmember Lund's favorite topic. It's Highway 61. And just that, I noticed that the MinDOT still hasn't swept the roadway, and it is looking really rough where County Road 47 comes in there, the median, there's a lot of sand, there's a lot of weeds in that area, the, in particular, the property that was purchased by the QuickTrip, but it wasn't developed, that's all full of weeds and looking really rough. And so, if a little attention could be given to that area, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other announcements? Okay. First of all, I want to take this opportunity, Councilmember Lund, before our next meeting on August 16th, it will be your birthday, so we want to wish you a happy birthday. What do you have planned? Anything exciting?
Yeah, we've got a meeting.
Yeah, well, we might, so we can celebrate that evening as well. Okay, and if he was here, next time you see Councilmember Bolsonic, it's his birthday on the 18th. So, when you get a chance to see Joe, also wish him a happy birthday. So, happy birthday to both of you. We have upcoming tomorrow night, council and citizens, we have National Night Out events tomorrow. They'll be held all around the city. We have over 25 neighborhood parties, and we also have an all-city event at Lyons Park beginning at 5:30, and that will go until 7:30 PM. So, that's tomorrow night, National Night Out. On Wednesday, August 8th, the Welcome Week Planning Committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM at Hastings City Hall. They're working on the welcoming week that takes place on the week of September 14th, and they'll continue their work and plan events for helping make Hastings a more welcoming community. On Thursday, August 9th, at 6:30, Hedra is scheduled to meet, and on Monday, a week from tonight, at 7:00 PM, the Planning Commission will be meeting. A week from tomorrow, Tuesday, August 14th, of course, that's primary election day, the polls will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM, and please check our city website or contact City Hall with any election-related questions. On Wednesday, August 15th, at 7:00 PM, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting. They normally meet Tuesday, but since we have an election, on Tuesday, the 14th, they'll be meeting on Wednesday, August 15th at 7:00 PM.[1747.46] Thursday, August sixteenth, not only is it councilmember Lund's birthday, but in celebration of that birthday, uh, well, there's gonna be a seven-thirty A M s- city council meeting, special meeting, to canvass the primary election results that morning at seven-thirty. Um, uh, later on, that evening at six P M, the City Council will be meeting in workshop to discuss the twenty nineteen budget. And also at six-thirty that evening, the Public Safety Advisory Commission will, will be meeting here at City Hall. On Monday, August twentieth, at six P M, again, counsel, two weeks from tonight, we will have another workshop. We'll deal with an indoor recreational facility discussion. And at seven P M, will be our regular scheduled City Council meeting, again, on Monday, August twentieth. We have no other, uh, business before this body. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Liefeld. That's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.